All right, I've got seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. I'll invite Pastor Greg from Open Door Community Church to come in and give our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to pray. It's a, hopefully, I'm speaking for most pastors, something we don't take lightly. It's a very great opportunity. And Councilwoman Kale, I love that shirt right there. Give us special extra prayer for them tonight. They need it, so it's all right. Let's pray. I know, I've been a fan for a long time. That's all right. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather tonight. And we thank you for the freedom that we have to gather, Lord. A freedom that has come at a great cost for a long time. And a freedom, that hopefully, Lord, that American citizens don't take for granted. Kind of pray that you would just bless this evening's proceedings. Thank you for your grace. And, Lord, I pray that your grace would be prevalent tonight. And even in discussions and votings and from the community and the council, the Lord, even in disagreements, there'd be a spirit of harmony. And that, Lord, you had blessed this city. You'd blessed the success of this city, God, and the endeavors in which it goes. Bless all of those that are in public service, God, that faithfully run to the call of duty when this community needs them, Lord. And pray your protection and blessing on all them, on our mayor, on every council person this evening. Thank you for our country and for our freedom. Bless us, Lord, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, I'll call the meeting to order. This is our November 1st, 2016, regular meeting of City Council. Let's stand and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll ask Mrs. Hoffman to take roll call.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Here.
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Sudkamp?
Here.
Ms. Pitts?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Ms. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Blankenship? Mr. Howard?
Here.
We have a quorum. You've received a copy of the minutes of the October 4th, 2016, regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Motion by Mr. Kyle. Second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, we'll approve the agenda for this evening. You've received a copy of the agenda of the November 1st, 2016, regular council meeting. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Motion by Mrs. Kyle. Second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, we'll move on then to our special presentations for this evening. First off, we've got our business spotlight, Willow Ridge. Ray, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak in front of you just a little bit about the business that I work for here in the city of Erlanger. My name is Ray Loughlin, Technical Sales Director for Willow Ridge Plastics. We have been in the business of manufacturing, testing, researching, and developing oxo-biodegradable additives for the last 26-plus years. And here in the city of Erlanger since 1994. I'm not going to try to get too much into the weeds here, but I just want to explain a little bit about what our company does and how it benefits everyone here in this city and as well the world. Our technology is called an oxo-biodegradable, which goes into everyday, normal plastic products and makes them biodegradable. So, we generally use it and sell it as a one-time-use item that can go into plastic products that you aren't going to be using very much in your life. Generally speaking, you don't want your car to break down, so we don't sell it into the car or in automotive industry. But something like a straw or a bag that you might get at Kroger, or silverware even, would be something that would be right up our alley that we would work towards trying to make biodegradable. By using about 1% to 3% of our additive technology that we manufacture, you can easily achieve this in a one-year, two-year, even three-year lifespan to make your plastic product biodegradable. The way this works, very briefly, is through oxidation. In other words, oxygen in the air is used to biodegrade plastic. It's the same system essentially that rust will go through. So, when metal rusts, it's being oxidized. So, it's a natural process that already happens to plastics. But unfortunately, a bag from Kroger may last up to 100 to 300 years if it's thrown away normally. With our technology, it's reduced to a one-year shelf life and won't be in the landfill for very long after it's been disposed of. It's important to note that Willow Ridge, again, has been around for a long time. Unfortunately, and fortunately, we are very much an export business, mainly because outside of the United States as a whole, they are very willing to go to a different technology for their plastic products. Before my time, it was about an 80% export, 20% domestic business that we ran. Nowadays, it's about 60% export, 40% domestic. So, we are seeing growth here in the United States. But unfortunately, there aren't very many reasons for companies to go the green route with their plastic products. One thing that we have been doing, and me personally, a lot, has been trying to work with governments in particular to help educate and let them know that this technology exists and is available for them to utilize if they see fit to do so. And so, we've worked with cities like the city of San Diego, where they were close to banning plastic in their city. We worked with them to teach them about our technology. They have now transformed that law into something where plastic is no longer allowed, banned in that city unless it is an oxo-biodegradable and responsible for its disposal. We're currently working with the Parks and Recreation Department in Cincinnati to make sure that all of their trash bags and doggie-doo bags are biodegradable. We are working right now with state legislatures in Minnesota to help make a statewide law or laws benefiting companies that would be willing to go towards a packaging using an oxo-biodegradable. I did bring a few show-and-tell pieces for you, because it's easy for me to sit here and talk about it, but I think it's a little more impactful to see it for yourself. These are lunch food trays from County up in Upper New York. And they said they go through 300,000 of these per month, essentially. Every one of them is disposed of and thrown away into their landfill. So, they were looking for a responsible way to be able to do this. Poly styrene, which is what this is, a styrofoam tray, is something that is going to last upwards of 300 to 500 years sitting by itself. Now, one day, it will degrade. Every one of your children's children will be dead by then, unfortunately. It'll just be around in the landfill. Using our technology, which started out as white, after a year and a half, has changed over to a different color, because this is the first step of the oxidation process. You're essentially taking oxygen out of the air to slowly oxidize it. You change the color first, and eventually, this will start to break apart and splinter so that it becomes degradable. After that, microorganisms that eat your leaves and banana peels and whatever else may be in a landfill are able to then eat this, just like they would those organic things. They can't touch this, though, unfortunately. Again, I mentioned everyday items. I did bring a few more that I'll pass around here. The doggie-doo bags are a very hot item in different regions of the world, along with here in the United States. Here's a bag that hasn't gone through any testing, and this is a bag after six months of testing. Very short amount of time to achieve biodegradation with something like this. You have everything from garbage bags, which would be a very simple solution. This one has gone through some testing, and you'll see for yourself that it is starting to break apart, losing its physical structure. Willow Ridge has worked with larger companies in the past and still are. Right now, we're working with Heineken, so that if you end up going to a soccer match in Europe and order a Heineken, you'll get it in a cup with one of our additives in it, and it'll be disposed of in a responsible manner afterwards. I have here three different cups that United Airlines is currently testing with us to start using in all of their airlines in Southeast Asia. We worked with Colgate to make toothbrushes that are actually biodegradable. After three years, nobody wants their toothbrush falling apart on them day one, but to do so responsibly, you want to throw your toothbrush away after about a year. Like I mentioned, this technology has been around for a while. It's a well-known technology in some circles, scientific circles. It's been proven to be effective on most general types of plastic that you would find in the environment. There are two schools, two this type of technology, a biodegradable plastic, one is a hydro-biodegradable, one is an oxo-biodegradable. I've mentioned the oxas, that's what we are. The hydros you may have heard of are the PLA starch-based type products made from plant byproducts. These are great. We, Willow Ridge, will never disparage or say that you shouldn't think about using a technology like that. However, you should know that something like those other technologies do need specific circumstances to be biodegradable. Just because it's made from plants doesn't mean it'll actually do anything if it's not put in the right circumstances. And that would be an industrial composter, which there are very few large ones east of the Mississippi. So, it's something that, using an oxo-biodegradable, you can use this anywhere, and it will still biodegrade as long as oxygen is present. One of the things that Willow Ridge has been known for is that we are one of the top three companies in the world manufacturing this type of technology. And we don't believe in a one-size-fits-all approach like some of our competitors. They may have one additive tell you to use it at one percentage, and they get that type of biodegradation. Willow Ridge has up to seven different types of additives as our mainstream items and will customize other orders for customers. So, we try to tailor the product that will fit your product best and give you the desired shelf life overall of what can be achieved. And I just brought a few examples of our additives. These are our two most popular. So, essentially, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak a little bit about our technology and our business. We've been in Erlanger for so long, we don't have any plans to leave, because you guys are so great to us. But if you ever do consider the idea of working with plastic to make it a little bit more environmentally safe in your city, we would be very willing to help you out and advise as best we can in that way. Plastics is a necessary part of our lives, but with our technology, they don't have to be a stain on the environment as well.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming out.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
What are the, what's the differences in the color?
That's simply, they wanted a blue cup versus a clear cup.
Oh, okay. So, it was the person that was actually...
Right. United uses a blue cup generally for certain drinks and a white cup for other drinks.
Oh, okay.
And so, they wanted to make sure that it didn't have any changes because of the color by using our additive.
Okay.
I guess I should mention that our technology does only increase the price by about a 1% to 3% markup, which compared it to any of the other biodegradation technologies, that could be 100% to 300% increase in price, is quite a value.
That was my question. Can any companies claim any of that on taxes for doing any type of environmental?
Well, not currently, because there are no laws that are pushing that type of...
On that?
Especially in Minnesota. We've got a U.S. Congressman in the House of Representatives who is also working with us and the, not the EPA, FDA, something like that, that are working towards putting that into some of the things like the Green Guides, which are out, the FTC, there we go. The FTC has something called the Green Guides they publish, but they have excluded oxo-biodegradables for a number of years, and they only address it every 10 years. So, we are working with their Oversight Committee in the House of Representatives to put us onto that, so that we become a pushed technology overall.
Good, thank you.
Awesome. Do you ever consider going into schools, especially like on the high school level, explaining this technique to them? Because that's where your hope is. The young people...
It is.
Are so conscious about recycling, you know? And I think they would really be interested in this kind of thing.
It's, it would be my pleasure to do something like that. I have done that with, I believe it was a school in like Utah, that they were looking for, they had some program going on where they wanted to teach their kids about other ways to dispose of waste. And they ended up having me do a Skype lecture on the technology to about four or five different classes, teaching them just the little bit that I could about the idea and the technology.
Fascinating. Oh, I think...
It is.
Wonderful.
Well, kind of connecting to what Vicki said, I don't know, I'm sure most of the schools have some type of environmental science class. I know St. Henry does.
Yeah.
So, if you call the school and maybe say, you know, "Do they ever want to use me as a guest speaker in the environmental science class?", that could get, you know, more focus out to the kids who are...
Absolutely. It would be my pleasure to do something like that. I'll look them up.
Do you have a card?
I've left them with David. He has a stack of my cards, so that if you wish to discuss further than this forum, I would be happy to talk with anyone.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It's neat to know that there's a business like that right here in Erlanger.
Where are they located? Where are they?
On Dixie Highway. You've passed it a million times.
No kidding?
Yeah, it's...
Dixie Highway is pretty...
Right behind...
Behind Speedway.
Speedway, right behind Speedway.
It used to be called Thermacore.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, tucked back there.
That's awesome.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the proclamation for our Extra Mile Day. So, I'll go ahead and read through this real quick. "Proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Erlanger to all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas Erlanger, Kentucky, is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Erlanger, Kentucky, is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Erlanger, Kentucky, is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Erlanger, Kentucky, acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 575 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2016. Now therefore, I Tyson Hermes, Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2016, to be Extra Mile Day in Erlanger, and do commend this observance to all our citizens given under my hand and the seal of the City of Erlanger on this first day of November, 2016." We'll send that on to Extra Mile America tomorrow. All right, then, next on the agenda is the mayor's report. So, a couple quick items I wanted to mention. We've talked for a few months here about our sidewalk survey. That's going to begin this week. That's Precision Concrete's going to start surveying the sidewalks, you know, from between Dixie Highway and the interstate, I-75, and then also along the Stevenson Corridor in Erlanger through there.
How long did they say that would take? I don't remember what they, did they say?
I think they were anticipating a couple weeks.
Oh, it's not too bad.
Yeah, yeah. And if you've seen the reports that they do, they're extremely comprehensive. It's incredible. All right, also, I wanted to talk about the Narrows Road property. So, this is the church that came up a few months back at the corner of Narrows and Brightleaf. We had a funeral home that was interested in purchasing the property. And I think, you know, probably a lot of you have already heard this, but just to make sure that everybody's heard it, the property has been purchased by Faith Church, the people who are leasing it before. So, now they are the owners of the church, and it's going to maintain its, or it's going to stay as a church. So, I think we're all glad to hear that.
I had a feeling when I saw the big banners at the end.
Right, right. Yeah, so that's exciting. The other thing I wanted to talk about briefly, you know, something that we're going to talk about later in this meeting is the salary. We talked about the wage scales and the salary increases. And I wanted to just kind of clear one thing up, or a few things up. You know, my, part of my hesitation as we were talking about this in our committee meeting was a few things. You know, jumping into anything is always kind of scary, and it is just as much for me as it is for you guys. But some of the questions I had in my mind were, would it be effective? Are our benchmark cities truly benchmark cities? Is the health insurance that we're going to be switching to going to be comparable to what we have now or better? And is it, is this going to become effective before we actually have the money? Because what we're doing here is we are changing the health insurance for the employees of the city of Erlanger, and it's providing substantial savings to the city. With part of that money, we are increasing the salaries of a lot of our, a lot of our staff that we have surveyed other cities, comparable benchmarks, and tried to compare ourselves against them. And we feel like we're on the lower side of the pay scale. Mr. Fields has put a ton of work into this, even prior to our committee meeting. He had put a ton of work into it. And since then, he's put even more work into it. And what you've got in front of you, Council, is a packet that has a lot of the same stuff that you've seen already, but it's got additional information as well. One of the things that we did find as we were looking through this was that one of the benchmark cities we were comparing was Fort Thomas. And we did actually, I mean, after quite a bit of discussion, we determined that it was not necessarily a benchmark. And we added Fort Mitchell in instead. And you'll notice, so you'll notice that. And some of the comparisons we were looking at in the benchmarks was the averages between the cities, as well as looking at the averages if we were to take out the high-paying city and the low-paying city. And then in addition, on page three, you'll see the fiscal year 2015, 2016. There was another column that was added that basically is the budget spending per resident of the city. Again, you're going to see that Erlanger is kind of right smack dab in the middle of the cities that we're comparing to. Going on from that, we also looked at the budgets that each city spends on its police department, fire department, general government, and public works, and compared that portion of the budget to the overall budget and the percentage. And there again, that's, it's telling. Essentially, what I'm getting to here as I'm explaining all this is that it's telling us time and time again that everything that we had thought, everything that we had suspected was accurate. And, you know, that makes me a lot more comfortable about making these decisions. You've got the wage scales, and I think the last thing in the packet, now, there's also the budget, the last thing is looking at the list of employees, employee by employee, and seeing what their current band is, what their new band will be, what the difference is between their current salary and the proposed salary. I think that's all very helpful stuff. So, I would appreciate everybody reviewing that. And with that, I didn't have anything else to report. So, we'll move on to the reports of committees. First up, we've got police under public safety. Mrs. Sudkamp? Mrs. Kyle?
Erlanger Police conducted a search warrant on the residents on Carriage Hill, which resulted in several arrests and the arrest of the Independence Remke robbery suspect. It was a big bust.
Mm-hmm.
They were very proud. Sergeant Sterling, Lieutenant Lemming, Patrolman Ashley, Patrolman Rigsby, and Patrolman Ellison participated in the back-to-blue at Remke's. A new hiring test was given to establish a new recruit list. Lieutenant Colonel Brendel and Sergeant Gertler attended the State FOP Conference in Lexington. You're not ready for this, guys. The construction on northbound 75 is complete. Thank the Lord. It's currently in a cleanup phase. It should be totally completed by the end of next week.
What are you guys going to do with all that extra time now?
Oh, gracious.
I'm sure they'll be busy.
In all seriousness, aren't they going to start southbound next week? Or is it... Is it spring? I mean, they are starting southbound, aren't they?
I know. Yeah.
I've heard that somewhere.
People have avoided that whole region for months and years, it seems like. Colonel Wilson and Lieutenant Colonel Brendel went to P E C C training in Barron River. And Officer Tyler Ellison graduated the police academy. I don't know if he's here. Nope, okay. Command staff attended the Northern Kentucky Police Chiefs meeting. Lieutenant Colonel Brendel attended the retirement party of Covington Officer Dave Coats. And several members of the department participated in Special Olympics trivia night. Sergeant Sterling attended Halloween night at the Railroad Depot. And I believe there were videos of that on, for people to see on Facebook. Chief Wilson and Lieutenant Colonel Brendel attended a police meeting with Crescent Springs. And last, Lieutenant Colonel Brendel and Sergeant Sterling attended Beckfield College Advisory Board meeting. So, they've been very busy. And that's all I have, but the chief is in the house.
Chief Wilson?
Just in reference to the police test that we gave Saturday...
Can you get to the mic, chief, so we can record it? Thank you.
Say your name.
Your address.
Who are you?
I'm 29. Now, in reference to the police test that we gave Saturday, we had 48 people signed up for the test. And just to show that it's countrywide, we had 20 show up. We advertised for this for several months. We used a few people, I think eight or 10 folks were on the list from last year. And out of the 48, 20 showed up. I think 16 passed, and we have a few other laterals that have shown some interest. But I don't think it's indicative of the city of Erlanger. I think it's indicative of the law enforcement feeling around the country. You know, it's a, I'm not going to toot our own horn here, but it is, it's a difficult job, just like every other public service job, but for what you have to put up with the lack of interest is just not there anymore. And it's just, it's getting harder and harder to recruit. And that's why we, you know, the salaries are important to keep the people that you have. You know, I hate to beat a dead horse, but this is what we're, we decided to go ahead and have a test every year in the same month. We're working on that procedure now, and it's simply to keep enough people that we can pull from. Because out of the 16 people we have left, we might get four or five, maybe. And out of those four or five, we might get two or three that we can actually put on the street. It'll be about a year and a half before that happens, so... But the staff is working real hard to improve that, but I just wanted to let you all know that that's what some of the, some of the blocks that we have to get through and get over to keep what we have. So, we appreciate all the support. That's all I have.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got fire and EMS under public safety. Mrs. Skidmore? Mr. Meyer?
Okay, I'm going to start off, and then Gary's going to finish.
All right.
Point, there's quite a few things on here. The fire department's been really busy. Point Pleasant and Erlanger practiced attacking structures, structure fires using a new prop called Fire Blast. It was purchased by the state. It is a trailer that uses propane to simulate a residential fire with temperatures ranging from 200 to 700. Three firemen attended the Leadership Two at Burlington. The course was free, and it counts towards a college degree in fire science. Training was done on the safety pad. I guess that's the computer. For the new... Training was done on the safety pad, I guess that's the computer, for the new EMS reporting system for medical calls, which should improve over the past experiences quite a bit. Erlanger, Point Pleasant, and Elsmere received training for garbage truck fires. So we're really pretty versatile over all the things that they've done so far. Firemen attended heavy vehicle extraction course at River City Metals in Newport. This class focuses on proper actions and responses for extricating victims from large vehicles such as semis, dump trucks, things of that nature. Safety inspections are on target to complete over 600. They've got two months left, and I think they've got around 100 left to do, so that should work out. Congratulations to Scott Lewis for 12 years, Scott Shepard, 12 years, Eric Riefenberger, five years. Erlanger Fire EMS Honor Guard assisted with Fallen Firefighter Memorial in Frankfurt. And 12 smoke detectors, five carbon dioxide alarm, carbon monoxide alarms donated by the Lions Club were passed out. 1,700 students were taught about the use of them. And then fire trucks and medic units visited various neighborhoods on Halloween and made their presence known. So, that's all I have. Gary, if you want to.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to take a moment to, I guess, commend the, the fire department EMS. On October the 9th, I had the privilege of working the chain crew at the Erlanger Lions football game my son plays. And we had actually two squad, or two calls that day. The first one, the, and it's always a shame to see kids leave on a stretcher. The first one was concussion-related. And the second one was really where I, I was standing, there was a, just, there's always what is perceived as the amount of time is going by versus the amount of time. And as we're able to look at, you know, through some of the information that we have, the fire department EMS was, was on scene within less than four minutes. And, you know, when, when you're standing there helpless watching this, it's, it's always tough, and it seems much longer than it actually is. But, but because we have, I guess, the equipment at multiple stations, we were able to, to handle two calls within 30 minutes. And while it's still sad to see, you know, two kids leave on stretchers, I just wanted to commend the fire department EMS for their service. I think Chief was back there. Captain McQuary is here as well. There he is.
Hello, Dad.
Whoa.
You said?
All right, we'll move on to public works. Yeah, I'm not going to hesitate here. Got to take advantage of this. Mr. Cahill, Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, I would like to thank Public Works for the great job that they've done at the Halloween event, for setting it up and tearing everything down. They had the park look a real nice for the Halloween thing. The Public Work Replacement Committee continues to work with Freightliner and Henderson Equipment Representatives in the process of their replacement of the dump truck budgeted for this year. We have a tentative trip planned to the Henderson facility in Ohio this month and hope to have a truck in service by the close of the year. That's all I have.
So we also have one bid we'll be discussing tonight on the Nelson Road sidewalk rebid, so we'll be bringing that up later on in the meeting. Mr. Milken?
Wilson.
Uh-oh.
I thought he was leaving.
I thought he was leaving.
Just wanted to mention, I spoke with Renee earlier about the lighting on Halbert Avenue. Just a little update, the light posts are supposed to ship the 23rd of this month, so hopefully we'll have those by the end of the month, and hopefully have your lights up by mid-December. Try to get a little more lighting down Halbert Avenue. That's all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
All right, under administration, Mr. Howard, Mrs. Cahill?
Yes, so important, an important reminder for residents, today was the day that you could start registering for the Thanksgiving senior luncheon. Sherry, is it filled already?
I think we have 20.
20? Okay, because it fills up very, very quickly. It, and it started 10:00 AM this morning. The city is taking reservations for the senior Thanksgiving luncheon. There's a limit of 50 reservations, so don't wait too long to sign up. This year, the luncheon will take place at the city building instead of at the Erlanger Library, and it will be on November the 15th, starting at 11:30. Seniors must be an Erlanger resident. They must bring proof of residency with them. It will be checked. And if you're interested in attending, you are to call 859-727-2525. And general government offices will be closed the 24th and 25th. That's Thanksgiving and the day after Black Friday, all right? And then we have one upcoming event, and that's just the senior Thanksgiving luncheon. So again, seniors, proof of residency will be asked when you attend, and please start signing up because 20 of the 50 spots are already gone. And that's it, and Sherry?
Well, I have. Mr. Howard?
I just have two, two dates I need to bring, for your attention. The next volunteer meeting for the citizens of Erlanger to volunteer for our upcoming events will be on Monday, November the 14th, so please, at 7:00 PM here in the city building. And I'm surprised Greg Isaacs didn't mention this when he was out doing the invocations this evening, but on November the 20th, at Erlanger Church, Christian Church on, here on Graves Avenue, we're going to have, they're going to have their, Erlanger Ministerial Association is going to have their community Thanksgiving service, and they're inviting all residents of the city to come on out and worship God a little bit and give God thanks for everything he's given us for this year. So, please take note of that. It's special, it's a special event, so.
Where is that?
Up at Disciples of Christ, up on Graves Avenue.
Okay. And then what time is the, the meeting on the 14th? The volunteer meeting?
At the 7:00.
7:00, okay.
Everything's at 7:00.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe Sherry's in the house.
I don't have anything, sir.
All right, thank you, Sherry. Thank you. All right, next up, we've got economic development and finance. Mr. Blank, or no, Mrs. Pitts, sorry.
The auditors have completed their fieldwork and are now busy preparing the comprehensive annual financial report, which should be ready for a formal presentation at the December Finance Committee meeting. Everybody was sent a copy of the September 30th financial statements on October 31st, and Steve's in the house.
Hello, Dad.
Hi, thank you.
I didn't want to mention that Randy is not here because he's taking a deposition in Pennsylvania, so.
Okay, thank you.
He wanted to make sure that somebody said that.
All right. All right, next up, we've got codes, building, and zoning. Mr. Dunhoff, Mr. Burke?
Yes, on the October 18th committee meeting, we had two groups come and talk to us. Transitions came and talked to us about getting a zone changed down on, at 313 Madison Pike zoning, and then also Ohio Valley Solid Surface presented their case about getting a zone changed. But, in the meantime, the property has been sold to a different group.
Are you kidding me?
No, the thing is, we don't need a zone change because there's an indoor soccer facility there, and a soccer group bought it.
Oh, my goodness. That's crazy.
But, in the meantime, David has talked about transitions and Ohio Valley Solid Surface, and he's going to be going out into the community looking for places for these two groups.
Oh, good, good, good.
Lovely.
Well, they were both.
They were.
So, he is, he is working with both of them, and we don't know who the soccer league is. It's bought this place, but David's got an idea who it might be.
I thought the one guy already.
They wanted an indoor soccer facility, and it's already got an indoor soccer field, so.
Right, right.
It fits just perfect for them, so.
Great.
It won't be coming back to us for a zone change, so.
I'm pleased.
And Sherry, I'll give it to you after the meeting.
Thank you.
That's all we have. David's in the house.
All right, thank you.
Good job, David. Find those two people a place to live.
All right, then the next, we've got progress in revitalization. Mrs. Pitts, Mr. Cahill?
No report.
All right. All right, you've heard the reports of our committees. Do I entertain a motion that we accept or adopt as presented? Looks like a motion from Mrs. Sedkamp, second by Mrs. Skidmore. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, then next up, we've got the reports of the representatives. Are there any reports of the representatives this evening? Kent County Alliance?
Yes. Okay, there's like five or six real quick things that I wanted to mention. The Halloween candy safety, I know that was last night, but some of the kids have still have some candy left, believe it or not. They're still not bouncing off the walls. They said there's an actual safety thing that you can do to make sure that the candy has not been tampered with. It's called the float test. Obviously, you can only do this with candy that's wrapped, okay? You put it in water, and when it's in the water, if there's air bubbles that come up, it means that something has disturbed that wrap, and the children shouldn't eat that candy.
Now, could you come over and wipe off all my candy?
Wipe it all off?
Yeah, after I put it on the bathtub.
It's in a pan of water. If a kid got enough to fill a bathtub, they shouldn't be eating any. They shouldn't have any more.
That sounds like fun.
Get a bath like that, right?
Anyway, that was a suggestion. It was not said in jest. It was actually a real suggestion. There's a health fair on the, the 12th of November. It's a Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 at Dixie Heights High School. It's open to the public. Everybody's invited. And Simon Kenton is actually, Simon Kenton School is actually trying something different. You know, locally here, we did the butterfly metamorphosis thing. Well, Simon Kenton is, they're doing a program called Plant the Promise, and it's a different take on the butterfly metamorphosis. They planted 1,800 tulips and daffodils. They plant them in the fall, and then when the bulbs bloom in the spring, the students see the results of their actions from things that they did earlier. So they see how, they see how that it morphs into something good. There's an essay contest. I think Melissa's going to put an article in the paper from the Optimist Group, and it's, it's Chasing Optimism in the Face of Challenges. And there's a website for that. It's open to anybody that, it's a, it's a scholarship contest, www.Optimus.org. Our guest speaker today was Joe Markowitz at UK, and he talked about the drug problems and some positive ideas, and said 4% of the population uses 80% of opiate pain relievers. And Joe Kristofeld was also, Kristofield was also at the meeting, so he attended. So, there was a lot of information passed out today, and that's kind of summed it up a little bit.
Thank you.
That's the end of report.
Wonderful. OKI?
Yes, so I attended the OKI meeting, and just to let you know that our Dahlwick project was approved for grant money, so I'm sure we'll have some discussions to see if we're going to take that or not, so.
Awesome.
Great, wonderful, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, any other reports? Okay, so now we'll move on to the reports of city operations. City engineer, Mr. Biaks?
Yes, sir. We wrapped up the street replacement in the industrial park off of Crescent Springs Road, which is Commerce and Enterprise Drive. Hope you are enjoying the ride on Graves Avenue, Bartlett, and Cowie around the school. That contractor was very cooperative and held off their work till the fall break to try to avoid the issues with the school, and it turned out very well. The Water District is just about wrapping up the water line replacement Erlanger Road, and we have a contractor waiting in the wings in the springtime to replace that section of the street. So, we're making great progress with the monies that we have in the budget this year, and hopefully we'll see an opportunity to fill in some more. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Biaks. Our city attorney, Mr. Gatlin?
I have nothing to report tonight, mayor.
All right, our city council attorney, Mr. Wickman?
Mayor, I don't have anything to report, other than the ordinances that are on the agenda.
All right, we'll get to those. City administrator, Mr. Fields?
A couple things. To follow up on what Mr. Cahill said, so I received this letter on the 28th of October. OKI did approve our funding for the Dahlwick project. And the way it is laid out, I'm reading this, that's why I'm looking down. 2.12, $2,120,000 in federal funds, and design funds scheduled in fiscal year 2014. Right-of-way and utilities scheduled in 2018, and construction initially scheduled in 2019. And we talked about this, it's a 20% match that we are going to split with Boone County. So, I know Mr. Biaks has done the preliminary work on that, so we'll be working with, I guess, the state and the counties to see when, in fact, all of these things will go about. But it is the design funds for fiscal year 2017, and it's all broken down in, in the grant application that we put in, how much funding for each part of this is, it's broke down pretty good. So, we'll have that back, so my guess is that we will not have to do the whole total 260 this first year that we had talked about, which is part of our match. I believe it will be spread out over those three, those three years. So that's good news. But they gave a total of $77 million in funding with 42 projects, is what they did, so. And it's quite an impact on the, the region. And of course, that's OKI with the Ohio, Kentucky, and Indiana, so it's spread out amongst the three. But I think Northern Kentucky did very well this, this time, when I, when I saw the, the projects that were, that were done, so. That's all good news. I knew it were coming. Secondly, I am meeting with the county on Thursday to further discuss what our role in this new radio system is going to be. Hopefully, we will enter into some kind of an agreement with Kenton County as to what our, our, our role will be in the project. They have now put together what they're calling the Northern Kentucky Communications Board. It has Boone, Kenton, and Campbell County as a part of that. They have been working to design the system for the three counties. So, us being the other dispatch center in the three counties, we need to decide and have some kind of an agreement with them about what our role is going to be. You know, ownership, that, the way the radio systems work now, the radio channels that we're working on right now are ours. They're, they're licensed to us from the FCC. We share some tower sites with Kenton County, and we have, and they share some with us for the one back here in the back in particular. Kentland Road is another one. So now the new sites, what are they going to use that are, that are, that are ours, that are, we own? So we're, we're going to have some ownership in this somehow. We share some equipment on some of these sites with the county. We share the cost, we share the maintenance. So going forward with the new system is going to be just a little bit different, so we're going to try to work all that out. So, be looking for upcoming discussions about that in the next few months. We come back and we need to talk about that and probably enter into some kind of memorandum of understanding, some kind of interlocal or something with the county about what our role is going to be, because that's a pretty huge project. The packet that the mayor was referring to in his report earlier has been updated from some of the information that, that was presented at the last committee meeting. If y'all have any questions about any of that before the next meeting and the, and the second reading of this ordinance, and you having to vote on it, please get with me. I'll try to clarify anything. But the, the mayor pretty much covered most of the stuff that we added to it. The wage scale did change just a little bit, and I moved a couple positions around firefighter EMT in particular. I've talked to the fire chief about that one. Police officer, police sergeant, they moved a little bit, so you need to, to look at that. But they pretty much, if you look at the scale and you look at those benchmarks in the survey we did, it, it fits in line almost perfectly with, with where we, we, we want to be or we, we need to be. So if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me between now and then.
Thanks for all your work.
You're welcome, thank you. That's all I have, mayor.
All right. All right, you've heard the reports of our representatives and the city operations. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Mr. Howard, second by Mr. Cahill. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, next up, we've got correspondence. Mrs. Hoffman, do I have any, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do. The city received a, a letter thanking Dawn and Renee Skidmore for using their horses and wagon for the daycare children at Grace Edget Child Development Center to give them a free ride to the pumpkin patch in Erlanger. And then the city also received a letter from Chris Knocleman with Kenton County Fiscal Court, thanking the city for supporting the Kenton County Senior Citizens Picnic this year. And that's all, sir.
All right. I have a piece of correspondence as well I want to talk about. Actually, I, I received quite a few letters from children at AJ Lindeman, and some of these, I'll probably share some of these over the next month or so. This is, it was, you know, you talk about making things worthwhile. This, this truly touched my heart. Some of these are fantastic. But this one says, "Dear Mayor Hermes, I think you are a good boss of Erlanger. Thank you." This is, it was, you know, you talk about making things worthwhile. This, this truly touched my heart. Some of these are, are fantastic. But this one says, Dear Mayor Hermes, I think you are a good boss of Erlanger. Thank you for telling the firefighters and police officers to put out fires and direct traffic. I think the roads are safe. Your friend, Elia Davis, second grade. P.S. Mayors are cool. In case you guys didn't know.
All right, how much do you pay?
All right. Okay, so, um, the next, uh, next item on the agenda is citizen public comments. We've got a few people signed up to speak this evening. First up is Mr. James Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you. Um, I just wanted to come up and address you real quick. And, uh, thank you for not kicking the can down the road, not waiting for the next council, and addressing the people that take care of us when we have an emergency. We had what could be a crisis for the next council and you guys addressed it with the pay scale. The problem's not completely fixed yet, but I was discussing with my son Connor, who you all know very well. Probably too well, unfortunately. Uh, we were talking about first aid and what you need to do in first aid and, and, you know, make sure you're safe. You need to assess the situation and you need to make sure they're stabilized and then move on to the next step. And so you've stabilized the crisis we have because if you didn't do anything and address these pay scale, we could have a real crisis in a couple of these departments by the time the next council gets there to address the issues and fix it long-term. You guys addressed that and took care of it and we can't wait on them to come take care of us. So thank you for not making them wait and taking care of them and fixing that issue. And making sure the next council, whoever it is, doesn't have a crisis on their hands. Just a challenge to look forward to and be able to, uh, look how to take care of them best and make sure we're competitive and we have, and keep the best and brightest police, fire and public works. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
All right, next we've got TD Dirker. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to come and acknowledge, I, it sounds like you're gonna talk about the sidewalks a little bit later, but my family is here. About three and a half years ago, we came to just report on something we saw in our neighborhood as being very unsafe. So part of Nelson Road that, there's a couple dips and valleys in the road. There's cars that really don't abide by the speed. And there's a significant safety issue in our view of that. I would come home from work and see families, small families, older couples walking on the street and cars kind of intermittently dodging them or them dodging the cars. There's been a lot of bumps in the roads. I think we, uh, you know, at the time Rick told me, hey, you can, as a citizen, you can take this matter up. And I think it was really good, Jim, you came out to the street and looked around and surveyed the situation. We had offered our land to develop the sidewalks and unfortunately, from an engineering standpoint, it just didn't work out. So the sidewalks, I think, are gonna go on the other side of the street. But I just wanted to acknowledge the good efforts of the mayor of Ed and Rick Bogart. I think along the way, I've kind of held my hand as a citizen, just saying, you know, I think this is a problem. Whether you were aware of it or not, the police would come sit in our drive, try and stop speeders, uh, try and stop people from texting while driving. And I think that this is gonna really provide a, a good, safe haven for people that are walking, trying to get from the neighborhood into the parks and stuff like that. So I wanted to come. I also wanted to bring my family just to, for them to see that, you know, hard work, goodness, uh, sticking with something even though it looks dark and bleak at times, uh, can prevail when, when good people kind of stand up and do the right thing. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got Diane Brown.
Good evening. I wanted to come and make a short presentation and update you on what the year's been like at the Kenton County Planning Commission. As you all know, I am Erlanger's representative. I'm one of twenty representatives on the commission for seventeen jurisdictions here in Kenton County. I had the privilege this year and through the next month as serving as the vice chair of the entire planning commission. So I've also been extremely busy with about four other committees that I attend every month as well. Um, as you remember, a couple of years ago, we did the subdivision regulations. We overhauled that. I wanted to update you that we've made a couple of adjustments. And I think in the next couple of years, you're gonna see a lot of benefit from the new roads that, um, development have gone in. We're also seeing an uptick in applications for new developments, which is a great sign of what's happening in the economy these days. Anybody with a house for sale knows those are things are starting to turn around as well. Direction2030.org, that is the Kenton County Planning Commission's, uh, comprehensive plan. It is a statutory required plan to look forward in our county. We did a whole new one a couple of years ago, totally revised it the first time since nineteen seventy-three. It's an online digital version. We're seeing a lot of success with that, a lot of accessibility. And we're getting ready to make some updates and changes that we've learned over the years with it. Um, part of that is the county's moving forward. The original plan was developed in coordination with fifteen different agencies who had input for the county on that. So as we're moving forward with those partners, we're now implementing parts of the goals and objectives and the elements of that plan. So you'll start to see things like we're updating the functional classification of roads that the Kent, Kentucky State Transportation Cabinet just did. We're also getting ready to do a bike study through the county that's being sponsored, actually, I believe with OKI and the Health Department. But those are implementations of that comprehensive plan. I serve on the bylaws committees. We've spent the year strengthening our financial oversights of Kenton County's Planning Commission as well as managing the taxpayer versus builder applicant split on fees. We're a very unique county in that we take in income from both of those locations to help with our planning. So we're really looking at finding the balance between both what taxpayers and an applicant put forward. We're also getting ready to work on our model zoning. A lot of our jurisdictions do not have what we have here in Erlanger, which is our own zoning administrator. So the, uh, PDS actually does their zoning. So we're looking at coming up with some model zoning for them and hopefully Erlanger will serve as a lot of that model. In addition, we've developed new cell tower technology and regulation. So one of the things that's happening, that technology is changing faster than regulations can keep up with it. But as anybody who's surfing the web on their phone and downloading and watching Netflix and everything else you do on your phone these days, getting that capacity upgraded has been a real challenge. So, um, a lot of our vendors are coming forward now and they're increasing capacity by putting in small cell sites. And these are about the size of a telephone pole. Well, that doesn't fit over, under the old regulations, which were for the giant cell towers that everybody put in, that nobody wanted in their backyard. These are popping up suddenly on just telephone poles. So we've put in some new regulations to, uh, really get input and work with cities so that the city is working directly with the vendor, so that those are going in appropriate locations to both give them the quality and depth they're looking for, but keep the aesthetic that the city has. We're also working on some of our transparencies. We're working on getting our own website, uh, separate from the PDS website and make it a little easier to find where our regulations are and what happens. We are also, um, we've had a lot of turnover. In the time I've been on Planning Commission, we've turned over about half our commissioners and we have a lot of new blood and they're asking a lot of questions on things that used to be very superficial. They used to be very, uh, just standard. You send it through Planning Commission, they make the decision. It comes back to a city. They're asking a lot more questions. So I'm also here to please ask and remind you that as a city, when Erlanger has an application before the Kenton County Planning Commission, if you could send a representative, somebody who's here from the city to help answer questions when those come about, that would be really beneficial. Um, unfortunately, one of the things the commission's looking at is possibly tabling applications if there's not a representative from the city here. Um, so I, I, we meet the first Thursday of every month, as I'm sure you guys know. Um, that does not conflict with our city council meetings. We'd really appreciate if somebody here could be present when we have an application. And if you can't be present and can't come to those meetings, we are, of course, uh, live and replayed on TBNK. If you ever have a late night and can't sleep, feel free to check in on us. We'll see if we can get entertaining. So that's my report for the year. Um, it's been a very good year. We've had a lot going on and a lot of activity and I can see that that will proceed over the next several years, um, committees as well. So unless there are any questions, that was all.
Good job, Diane. Thank you. All right, next item on the, uh, let's see, actually, I'm sorry, we have one more. Mark Estenfelder.
Thanks for having a meeting again. Thank you for the police and fire. I'll tell you, uh, that, that's awesome that, that, uh, they're actually, you're, you're looking at changing the pay scale and stuff for the police because they're very crucial to our neighborhoods, to the people that live here. Uh, I know we just paid taxes and stuff, so I like to see where my money's going and I'm glad you're getting it. You're gonna be there when I need you. Um, I like when other neighbors from other neighborhoods come out and say what a great job the, the city's done to help them out with their problems and it gives me hope. That's why I'm here each and every month, let you know the problems that we have. And the problem that we still have is, you know, the people running the stop signs through the neighborhoods. I know the presence has kind of been down a little bit with the police officers, but I know there's been a lot of other things going on with the interstate wrapping up and everything. So I do understand that, um, they, the, the people that run the stop signs know you're not there anymore. So they're backrotting. And I think, like I said at the last, the last meeting when the police officers were out there, I know the one morning, they probably got ten in that, that one morning between seven and eight in the morning. And nine, nine out of the ten don't live in our neighborhood. And my issue is, is I believe the intersection at Perimeter and Stevenson is dangerous. You talk to anybody in our neighborhood and I've gone through the neighborhood. I'm still working on getting my petition sheets filled. Haven't really run into anybody other than one or two that do not like the idea. They all say, we don't go out that way. It's dangerous. We have family over. We tell them not to go out that way. It is dangerous. And it, it, just pulling out of there is crazy. People do come in off of Turkey Foot, but the problem is, is the percentage of the people that come in and go through our neighborhood don't live there. They're not coming in to stay. They're coming in to cut through. So they avoid the stop sign at Stevenson. They're by the Circle K and they're trying to avoid the traffic on Turkey Foot. So they're using our neighborhood as a through road and it's making our neighborhood unsafe. Other than just being unsafe with the traffic, it's unsafe with having strangers come through your neighborhood that see that you forgot your garage door open or your child left their bike sit out front. They go through, they see, huh, man, there's no cars home. Guess what? Bike sitting outside. There it's gone or it's dark. They come through. They take your stuff. You know, we're trying to keep people out of the neighborhood that shouldn't be there. And one, it's a dangerous intersection. You ask anybody, it's a dangerous intersection. And that intersection's already almost set up for a cul-de-sac. It's got the middle divider. I mean, you block it off. I think it's a great thing and I think a lot of my neighbors do. I couldn't get a lot of people out because of the Halloween and kids got school and stuff, so. Well, I'm hoping to get, like Brightleaf Community did, have this place full to where you hate us. But we haven't seen the, the one question survey come out yet. But I think if I start getting them people out there, whether we have the survey or not, we can fill this place up with people. Maybe we can get that, that movement forward to get this situation resolved. And thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Would anybody else like to come forward and speak at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Uh, next item on the agenda is bids, the Nelson Road sidewalk. Mr. Biaks?
Yes, sir. Refresh your memory, we took bids on this back in the spring. Uh, at the time, uh, we expected to be able to satisfy all the easements necessary to, to do the job. And we had a limitation with the contractor. Uh, we got some very good bids at the time, but because we weren't able to produce the easements, uh, we didn't award the project. Since that time, uh, Public Works Department, along with the discussion with the mayor, they've been working, uh, over there trying to resolve the easement issues. We got down to where we have all the easements except for two. And we said, uh, we wanted to move forward. So the way to move forward would be to advertise the project, to, to install the sidewalk on all those that we have easements for and also inform the contractor in the advertisement and in the bid documents that during the construction process, if the either or both of the other two easements become available, then the contractor will honor the prices that he's awarding. So we took the bids on that basis, so everybody's upfront. And the contractor knows the minimum amount of work he can have and knows also the maximum amount of work he can have. So we want to move, move forward. So if you would go to the last sheet on the documents I left in front of you. We had four bidders. Straight Edge Construction Company was at sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. TMS Construction Incorporated was at seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. Alita Inc. was at ninety thousand, sixteen dollars and ninety cents. And Paul Michaels and Sons Incorporated was a hundred and four thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars. If you would go back to the front sheet. We had to do some re-engineering. We took bids before. But based on the information we have, here's the breakdown. You'll notice at the top, the contractor bid, uh, the low bidder was sixty-nine thousand, two twenty, anticipating that we can, that we can obtain the other two easements during the construction. There will be additional eight hundred, eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars. So what I want you to do is I want you to award the work to, to, uh, Straight Edge Construction Company not to exceed the total contractor amount of seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. That's my recommendation.
All right. Can we, can we get a motion? A motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mr. Cahill?
I have a question.
Okay.
So when you say two easements, so the sidewalk's gonna have just two places where it's just grass?
The bids that we have will take care of all the easements we currently have in place. And the additional work that would include, be included in that total amount that it would allow us to complete the other two if they, if they come available.
Are they next to each other or are they, are they the two easements that?
I think there's a parcel in between, isn't there?
There is.
There is, yeah, okay, so, um, and one of them is a, a parcel that's for sale right now. And then the other one, I've got a, I, I've actually just received a call today from them. And we've agreed that, we, I've been trying to meet with them for the last couple of weeks and it got pushed to this week sometime and he said he'd call me the first part of this week. I, I, I got a voicemail this afternoon. So I, I will meet with them and, yeah, I mean, the, the goal is to for it to be one contiguous sidewalk. All right, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, any other bids to discuss this evening? Any old business to discuss? Unfinished? Any new business?
You're gonna love, uh, the house on Stevenson. It's, uh, amazing. It is absolutely amazing when you.
You're talking about Eight-Eleven Stevenson?
Yes, it is unbelievable, the work that they have done there. You can see the house. You can see.
There is a house.
It doesn't look that bad with all the weeds and grass and, I mean, it, they, whoever did it, did a great job.
It's the same way with the, the house that we, um, on Holbert.
Yeah.
It looks phenomenal.
Really?
It doesn't even look like the same parcel of property. It really doesn't.
Several residents comment on it.
The lighting is working.
It's exciting, yeah. Any other new business? Okay. All right, then we'll move into legislation. First one is an ordinance regarding the prohibiting uses and structures. This is second reading.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, prohibiting certain conditions and uses of real estate and structures in the city and providing criminal and civil penalties for the violations of them. By summary, the, uh, or by introduction, I guess I should say, or reminder is that this ordinance is a consequence of House Bill four twenty-two that was, uh, enacted by the, the legislature this year, uh, combining all of the various statutes about nuis, nuisances and nuisance enforcement into one statute, in one set of statutes. Uh, but the consequence of that was that we have to redo what we had in place before. And that's what this ordinance does. It identifies those conditions that we had previously identified as being prohibited as nuisances and allowing the city to enforce the ordinance and to remediate those nuisances if necessary. Now, by summary, the section one provides for the definitions in the ordinance and provides that there, those definitions, those terms have the same meaning as provided in the statute. The second section, uh, identifies the activities and conditions of property that is prohibited. Uh, again, you all have received a copy of the ordinance and those things are identified specifically, but generally they are the same conditions and, um, uses that we, uh, that were prohibited in our previous ordinances. Section three, uh, provides the, uh, that the violations, that they, that violations of the ordinances are continuing offenses. Section four provides for the enforcement of them as a civil offense as opposed to a criminal prosecution. Section five provides for the criminal prosecution. Section five provides for the criminal prosecution. Section six, seven, and eight are simply the normal ordinances, or normal sections about the provisions being severable, the conflicting ordinances being repealed, the effective date and publication.
All right, do I, do we entertain a motion? I'm sorry, excuse me, this isn't... Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. Vicki, a motion from Vicki Kyle to accept as... Yeah, accept as read. Okay, we've got a motion and a second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. The next one is an ordinance regarding HB 422 code enforcement. This is also a second reading.
It's an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, creating a code enforcement board for the civil enforcement of certain ordinances of the city, one of them being the ordinance I just read. By summary, the ordinance, again, was a consequence of House Bill 422. We have a codes enforcement board, but that statute basically required us to recreate that board. That's what this ordinance does. Section two creates that board. Section three provides for the membership on the code enforcement board, provides it to be composed of five natural persons appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. Section four provides the terms of office of the members. Basically, they're staggered into one-year, two-year appointments, so that there's always, there's never a complete revision of the members of the board, replace them by staggering them two years into those terms of office. Section five provides the organization of meetings of the members of the board. Section six provides for the duties of the city clerk in providing assistance to the code enforcement board. Section eight provides for the enforcement proceedings and requires them to always be in compliance with the state statutes. Section nine provides for the city remediation of continuing violations, which means when the citations are issued, the fines become final and the offense continues without any remediation. Cities authorized enter the property and conduct that remediation at the expense of the property owner. And section 10 is new. It provides for a lien holder notification system. House Bill 422 requires that provision, and this ordinance directs the mayor and the executive authority of the city to prepare and develop a notification system so that if people who are interested requires notifications of the civil fines and remediation expenses and liens imposed upon violators, that they can become notified of those by simply asking the city and providing them with contact information. When the city gets that, they will then regularly provide to those people who request those notices, the notices of the citations that have been issued and the liens that have been imposed. That's really for the benefit of the bankers, the mortgage holders that hold mortgages on property in the city. They were complaining that they never received notices of the violations. Had they received them, they would have caused the property owner to remediate the violations. So they run some method of knowing when they should become involved in that, and that's what this provision, that's what this section of the ordinance and the statute requires. Again, the rest of the sections, or the normal sections, is provide for the severability of the provisions of the ordinance, the repeal of conflicting ordinances, the effective date, and publication.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wickman. Do we entertain a motion to adopt as read? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Skidmore. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. Next item is an ordinance regarding the personnel pay plan. This is a first reading.
It's an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the pay wage plan for all Erlanger employees and non-elected city offices. Pardon me. By summary, the ordinance, section one, amends our previous ordinance that established our existing pay plan. It amends that pay plan to conform to the provisions in the attachment. Each of you have received a copy of those. That attachment identifies the changes in the pay scale, the maximum minimums, and the band of the pay scale for the various employees. The changes are identified by the old numbers being lined out, the new numbers being underlined. Section two of the ordinance provides that the pay plan shall be implemented for the first full pay period in the month of January in 2017. And section three provides that in the event, at the time of that implementation, that any employee is not receiving the minimum amount identified in this ordinance, their pay shall be increased to no less than that minimum amount. Section four, five, and six, again, are the normal provisions about severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and the publication. I guess I need to make a comment, because I read these things, and I know it sounds like it's by rote, and the reason for that is you've all received copies of these ordinances in advance. What I'm saying by rote is simply those things that are required by statute. That's why I'm saying them. I know you already have the information, and if you had any questions about it, you would have already contacted me. So with that introduction or explanation, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment, because the copy that I have is not the last copy, or the copy that Mr. Wickman did some changes on. So I'm not sure if the city clerk had the new copy or not, but in section number six, it says effective date. The effective date, we had decided it would be the very first full pay period in the month of January, and that was one that I know Mr. Wickman made changes to and sent out. So I'm not so sure if, in fact, the city clerk received that one or not, because there were changes made. Mr. Gatlin, the mayor, Mr. Wickman, and I all discussed that, and it was going to be... So I know the copy that you have in front of you does not say that, but the word to get you that copy.
The big reason why we had mentioned that was because the savings in the pay plan and the healthcare coverage doesn't go into effect until January.
I see it's section two.
What's in section six, then, is contradictory?
Yeah, section six says effective as soon as possible.
Okay, so section six is then contradictory of the other section. So we need to remove that or change that? Or is that the same, the same?
No, 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 no. The effective date has not changed. It remains the same.
Okay. So that'll be January?
That's the effective date of the ordinance. The implementation of the ordinance occurs in January.
Okay, I am very sorry.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Forgive me.
So we're good?
We're good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
January 2017.
Okay, okay.
How's it going?
Yes, I am very sorry.
Okay.
You're okay.
All right, so do we entertain a motion to accept as read?
First reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right. Thank you. Need that correction once in a while. Next item then is a municipal order, the surplus equipment.
It's a municipal order 11-01-16-01, a municipal order of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, making the written determinations required by KRS 82083 for the sale or other disposition of property owned by the city. Those written determinations are as transfer or sell to another government entity. And if you look at the exhibit, you'll see that there are five police cruisers, which the disposal method is to sell to another governmental agency.
All right, do I entertain a motion to adopt this municipal order as read? A motion by Mr. Meyer, second by Mrs. Sudcamp. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, with that, there's no more items on the agenda. Do we have a motion for adjournment?